We're good? All right, welcome to the special meeting of the CAPC Eureka Springs, July 3rd, 2024. We're in the Eureka Springs auditorium. Welcome, everybody. I'm Steve Holyfield, vice chair, acting chair for now. Welcome. Roll call. Do you want to do a roll call? Bradley?
Roll call, David Evansino.
David Evansino, are you here?
Present.
Colin Polk.
Present.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
Make a note of this. All right, we have a series of special meetings. Due to the rules around special meetings, we will have to start a meeting and talk about a topic, then end the meeting, start another meeting. We want to follow the rules, and I appreciate anybody giving us feedback about that. It seems like if you ask five people what the rules are, you get five different responses, but we're going to make sure we cover all the bases. This agenda topic, the first one is contract approval. I have put this on the agenda before, a while back, we put that all commissioners have to sign all the contracts. I don't want us to slow down, so I always thought that we want to make a decision going back to two people signing the contracts, just for time and less hassle for the staff to track everybody down.
I think it's a great idea.
What do you think, David?
I think that sounds good.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion, then?
I move that we require two commissioners' signatures on all contracts moving forward.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We have four votes. Motion carries. Commissioners comments? You have any comments? Colin has no comments. Bradley, you have any comments? David, you have any comments?
None.
Chair has no comments. Next one.
I move that we adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
All in favor of adjourned this special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Welcome to our second special meeting, CAPC special meeting, July 3rd, 2024, in the auditorium. It's now 1:05. We have a number of special meetings today to take care of business. Welcome, everybody. Roll call, please.
Colin, David Evansino.
Here.
Colin Polk.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
And Mike's here. Okay. Agenda topic, review of all contracts. I put this on the agenda. I would like to, just be a regular practice, if we could ask Mike to bring a file of all current contracts to our CAPC meetings, so the ones who didn't sign it can kind of go through and look them over. I think it's our responsibility to make sure all the contracts are there, in place, happening. Could be just a folder file and just pass it around the room. We could even do a little initial sheet to make sure everybody got to see it, who saw it. And that's just a backup. What do y'all think?
Yeah, I mean...
What do you think, David?
I like that a lot.
Okay. Is that your motion?
I move that the district, I move that the tourism director bring all contracts to the commission meetings to be reviewed by all commissioners.
Second.
Colin Polk made the motion. Bradley seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 All four commissioners voted positive, so the motion carries. Commissioner comments? I'll just put it out there. Anybody having comments?
No.
Nope. No chair comments at this time. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Colin Polk made the motion to adjourn. Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Four positives, we adjourn. Our third meeting. Welcome to CAPC special meeting, July 3rd, 2024, and it's 1:10 in the auditorium in Eureka Springs. We're doing a series of special meetings to take care of business for CAPC due to our situation. Roll call, please.
David Evansino.
Colin Polk.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
David, my phone. Finance director vacancy. I put this on the agenda. We want to, go ahead, since our finance director, Scott Barden, resigned abruptly with no notice, we're kind of high and dry without a financial director, so I would like to instruct Mike to go ahead and post position through the city. You said you had the job description already?
Yes.
Okay. And I talked to, I guess you'd go to Jerry King and post it through the city and go from there?
Yes, go through Kim and Jerry and get into the system and online.
And then it has to be posted for a while?
We can post it for as long as we need to. We can post it for a month and then evaluate what we got in in terms of applications.
Okay.
Is this a salary position or an hourly?
That's up to you.
Not up to me.
It's a what?
Right now, it's an hourly position.
Hourly position.
Yes. I'd have to go back and compute the hours, but I think it was based on, I think it was based upon an $80,000 a year annual salary, but then divided by whatever that figure is to come up with that hourly rate. So it's, I'd have to look, I'm not sure what it is.
Can we get emails on all that? Just so we're privy to it before it goes live?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay. So how urgent, how much need are we? Is it two weeks, a month? What do you think? Depends on how many applications we get in?
Your application review, of course, is going to be the critical element of it, so what I would hope is that we are able to go ahead and start getting applications immediately, but I would suggest that we run it for at least 30 days.
Okay.
We can operate, depending on, you know, what we do for the rest of the afternoon with our additional meetings, to get through, and then we can make, I think, an educated and determined recommendation on what we want to do with that position, whether it be a full-time position or a part-time position, as is set right here.
Okay. And I personally would like Michael Atkins involved in hiring process. I don't know anything about finance. I don't want to make those kinds of decisions without other people who do know finance.
We've been, we've been very blessed, I think, to have Michael at City Hall working with us. You know, he's advised us every day this week, including earlier today, and that's a plus for us. So, you know, I think that we are in relatively good hands, but, you know, again, it's a temporary basis.
Right. Thank you, Michael. All right. So we'll post it, Mike will give it to Jerry, post it for 30 days, and then we'll see how the applications go. A reminder that commission, this is a position that reports to the commission, not to Mike. So, all right. Any other, anything else about that? David, do you have anything to say?
I do not.
Okay. All right. I guess we should go ahead and have a motion, make it official.
I move that we have the tourism director post a job position for finance director.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Four positives, motion carries. Any commissioner comments so far?
No.
Okay. No chair comments at this time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Colin Polk made the motion, and Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Also want to make a motion, the motion to the finance director vacancy was made by Colin Polk and seconded by Bradley Tate Green as well. Just keep it clean. Our fourth special meeting. Welcome, everybody. CAPC special meeting, July 3rd, 2024. We're in the auditorium. It is now 1:15 in the afternoon. We're having a series of special meetings to take care of business for the commission. Welcome. Roll call, please. Bradley?
David Evansino.
David? Here.
Colin Polk.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
This is a agenda topic, interim plan for CAPC payables and receivables. Mike put this on the agenda. You want to?
We are drafting a letter for your approvals this afternoon to take to Cornerstone Bank to remove Chris Jones, Christopher Clifton, and Scott Barden from the signature cards that we have in file for the bank accounts. We had visited earlier this morning with Michael Atkins over in City Hall about these recommendations of what we should do. His suggestion is thus, is that we currently have all of you on the signature cards right now, so there's certainly no change necessary for that. He did suggest that I am on the signature card as director, as every other commission has in the city of Eureka Springs. That would basically be an opportunity to go ahead and move things a little quicker, but still, there's no way that if I'm in a card, I can have my name on any check, especially if my signature was there. So that's just a recommendation from Michael to go ahead and do that.
So Michael said, yes, your name should be on it?
Yes.
Okay.
You did.
Correction, Steve, it's meeting number four. You had mentioned CAPC payables and receivables, and it's CAPC bank authorization. You may not have that sheet.
Oh, I have it.
Oh, do you?
That's what I said.
Oh. I thought you said payables and receivables.
I think Mike answered the wrong question.
Ah, okay.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Trying to combine two into one.
That's right. I'm back on bank authorizations, yes, number four, which is item D.
Right. So to remove Chris Jones, Chris Clifton, and Scott Barden, and put the rest, the commission on the card, plus Mike.
I will note that Marcus Oral from the Legislative Audit Committee was here this morning. He was visiting with City Hall. Michael brought him over. We had a visit upstairs in our offices. We kind of went through the same procedure, asking him really kind of protocol, and he basically reinforced what Michael had said, and felt like that was probably the best I could.
Okay, great. Always welcome input from people who know what they're talking about, so, all right? So that's the fourth meeting. Have a motion?
I move that, I move that we remove Scott Barden, Chris Clifton, Chris Jones from any and all CAPC bank accounts, and add Mike Maloney as a signature.
Plus all other commissioners.
All commissioners.
We're already on it.
We're already on there?
Yeah.
Let's have us on it.
David, a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, the fifth, and then a motion to adjourn.
Assuming there are no comments, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Colin Polk made the motion, and Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 And there's no comments, I see, since we're flowing through them. All right, our fifth special meeting, CAPC special meeting agenda, July 3rd, 2024. We're in the auditorium in Eureka Springs. It's now 1:19 PM. Going through a series of special meetings to get business done, considering our situation with the office staff and finances. So roll call, please.
David Evansino.
Here.
Colin Polk.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
Agenda topic, interim plan for CAPC payables and receivables. Mike?
Okay, we have several things here to go over. First of all, we are not able to process any payments right now, and the only thing we can do is make deposits. So we're in a little bit of a bind here. That will change, hopefully, with the signature cards updated, so that we can move forward. So we need approval from the commission to go ahead and, upon the approval of the invoices, to go ahead and start making our payments again. That's one. Two would be, we have no ability right now to process any online payments. We do not have a credit card. None of us possess individual credit cards from the city. In visiting with Michael this morning at City Hall, he suggested that the best thing to do is to go ahead and get a credit card from, or credit cards, plural, from Equity Bank, because Cornerstone does not issue credit cards anymore, but Equity does, and what he's suggesting is, is that we have one master type of a credit card which can be used, but also individual cards with limits put on them for myself, for Daniel Harris, and for Janet Kayler, Kayler, pardon. Primarily to go ahead and be able to execute short-term payments, but also for travel and for really necessities. We can't buy anything online right now. All other department heads do have credit cards through Equity. There is a $50,000 limit that the city has. Michael suggesting that the commission determine some kind of a ceiling, and that each member of the commission, or each member of the staff, have a limit on what they can have access to. In other words, $5,000, or 3,500, or 2,500, or whatever you think is fair, or whatever is necessary. The difference between doing a credit card and a debit card is, actually from personal experience, debit cards get hacked. Consequently, when you get hacked, your bank account gets hacked. If we had four credit, if we had four debit cards, that means the potential for being hacked is dramatic. A credit card purchase, however, can be contested and stopped immediately, and that's the big difference between a debit and a credit card. And I was advised at some point, actually through our desk, not to use a debit card to make payments, to use a credit card to do those things. Buy your groceries, or get cash, or whatever with debit, but then, on the other hand, the limitations that you have with a credit card are much greater. The other thing about a credit card is you can't, you can limit it to the inability to get cash, so you can't just stick at the machine and pull out $100. That's really the first and most significant thing. But it would require a visit to a person of Christian at Equity Bank to set that up, as she apparently has done for the rest of the city.
So you said yourself, Danielle, and who else?
Janet Kayler.
Janet?
J-A-N-A, yeah, Janet.
Janet.
Kayler.
Who is she?
She is our group salesperson.
Oh.
Yes.
Doesn't she have a longer name? I thought it was Joanna or something.
Well, she has three names. I just use Janet Kayler, it's simple.
Okay. That's why I was confused. When I talked to Michael about this, he said, like, departments have a certain limit, then as you go down the list, their limits are smaller and smaller. What do y'all think about Mike's limit on credit card? What do you, what do you suggestion, Mike, on your credit card? What would you see as, like, the maximum you would need, or?
Well, I'll go back to my previous experience. I had a $5,000 limit on a card. I don't think I ever spent more than 500. But I had a $5,000 limit. Our group salesperson had a $7,500 limit, and the group sales was probably more significant because that's how we ended up buying airline tickets, transportation and travel, rooms, and so forth. Advanced payments for displays and shows that we had to attend, so $7,500 was fine. Now, if for some reason that we would go over that limit, it was a call to the bank to say, by the way, we need a little bit of a credit advance on this one particular purchase, that would be granted, and then it would be taken away after the purchase was made. So there was never a reason that you could accidentally go over that, that limit. The credit cards have to be paid in full. You can't carry a balance, so in other words, there's never an interest paid by the city to the credit card company. So as soon as the bills come in, they can be reconciled, actually by anybody on the commission can look at those and make sure they're in line, and then, at that point, it's just a matter of going ahead and paying the credit card for that monthly fee. It all comes in on one big page, but each person that makes a purchase has got their name and what they purchased.
Okay. So now, your limit, what do you think?
5,000.
Danielle?
5,000.
And then Jan?
Jan, 7,500.
Why would hers be more, again?
I'm sorry?
Why would hers be more?
She probably have to buy more in terms of travel, and in terms of room lodging, probably airline fees, transportation fees, car rental, taxi, whatever it's going to be. It will take probably more money to travel.
Okay.
But that's, again, that would be a busy month. The months of January, February, and March are the three busiest months for group sales there are. So there would be probably multiple shows. I think in March right now, she's got three booked already in 2025 that need to be attended to, so those fees are going to be anywhere from, you know, possibly 1,200 to 2,500 per show. So we don't know yet, because we haven't made those commitments, but that's what it would probably look like.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So since we're on CAPC payables, specifically credit cards, we had at our last meeting a credit card motion to pay off almost all of the credit card, except for a few key line items, and I believe we've figured out those key line items, and I would like to make a motion to pay off the old credit card before we move forward to paying off, getting any more. We don't need a credit balance out there, and we have one.
You know what he's talking about?
Sort of.
Chris showed us a list of credit card charges, and he said there were some were questionable, so we made a motion to pay all the ones but the credible, but I've been advised by Michael Atkins, that we really don't have that option to take part of it, that we should pay it all. If we have questions about any items, that will be addressed, you know, but we should go ahead and pay that bill.
Yeah, it's an internal discussion, whereas we have an obligation to pay the credit card company for no matter what we, we purchase.
Somebody representing us used the card in good faith, therefore, we really don't have the option to say we're not going to pay it, so.
We did cover these expenses in our meeting last Friday, and I think that it was completely understood where those purchases and why those purchases were made, so I think it's applicable that we go ahead and take care of that obligation, obviously.
Right.
That also basically says that we weren't doing anything wrong to begin with.
Right. Does that, do we need a motion on that, or?
I move that we pay off the unpaid credit balance from the previous meetings.
Second.
All in favor, we have Colin made a motion, and Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have four positives, so to pay off the charge card. And that charge card's been canceled. Right, okay. Now, you got any more discussion about this other part, the payables and receivables?
No, I just want to, I've got some that I need to have some approvals made on, and I don't know that we need to discuss them right now, but we need to talk about them, as a commissioner would look at our receivables anyway, and just make sure that they're okay.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion for the interim plan for CAPC payables and receivables?
I move that we get new credit cards for the CAPC through Equity Bank, specifically Mike Maloney with the limit of 5,000, Danielle Harris with the limit of 5,000, Janet Kayler with the limit of 7,500.
I would also add that no cash, like, no option to draw cash.
Yeah.
No balance left on it.
With the recommended terms from Mike Atkins.
Right. Okay. Do I have a second?
Is Caitlin added to that as well?
She doesn't want one.
Okay. And then all cards paid in full every month?
Yes. And no option to pull the cash off of it?
And no option for cash, so I'll...
A bit stolen or something, they're not going to be...
Second that.
If that ever comes a problem, we'll adjust it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Colin Polk made the motion, Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Four positives, motion carries. Any commissioners' comments?
No.
I hear none?
I'd like to, it's not a comment, it's a suggestion.
Okay.
In the course of doing business with our organization, and in the course of being able to get things done in a more fluid manner, I'm going to suggest that we add back to our calendar, every other Wednesday, a workshop, where we can tackle one item, or two at the max, and be able to workshop through what will typically be perhaps a litany of items that are coming up. And that way, we're able to go ahead and a little bit more freedom to express our opinions, get some opinions from the public as necessary, and then be able to move, I think, in a more orderly manner. And what I would suggest that we do is to do those on the second Wednesday of each month at 4:00 PM in the auditorium for a period of one hour. Those items and whatever they are then can go to the full commission meeting on the fourth Wednesday. Should move through those meetings a lot faster, because we've had time to think about them, and also time to go ahead and make any adjustments necessary prior to the meeting and approvals.
That's something we can think about, but we can't make that decision today, and definitely not under this topic, so.
That's fine. I just want to put the buck in your ear.
And I have something to say about that, so. All right. I didn't hear any commissioner comments on the CAPC's payables and receivables. As acting chair, I don't have any comments. So I hear a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Colin Polk made the motion, and Bradley Tate Green seconded it. All in favor of adjourned our fifth special work meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. All right, our sixth...
Five meetings in one half hour.
You'll, you'll learn, we're not done yet. We have number six.
Did you get a six?
As chair, I believe in getting to the point, getting it talked about, getting it over with. I personally don't like meetings, so I prefer...
He's retired. He's ready to get this over with.
And it's my birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
All right. Our CAPC special meeting, our sixth one, July 3rd, 2024. It is now 1:31. We're in the auditorium here in Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Welcome, everyone. We are having a series of special meetings to address immediate issues that we need to address, due to our finance director resigning abruptly. We need to take care of business, and so, welcome. Roll call, please.
David Evansino.
David.
Colin Polk.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green, present.
Also noted that Mike Maloney, our tourist director, has also been here for all six sessions, and so agenda topic, Ozark Mountain Daredevils Folk Festival, BTG. Who's that?
So that would be me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is something that Mike and I...
It sounds like a Mustang. Mustang weekend.
So Mike and I, we're discussing Ozark Mountain Daredevils Folk Fest, and I'm going to let him kind of fill you guys in, because he knows best about this topic at the moment and what is pressing for it.
There's been, I can't recall what meeting it was, but it was certainly when Brian There's been, I can't recall what meeting it was, but it was certainly when Brian Wyman was on our commission, and we had a fairly good conversation about trying to, as we put it, probably up our game in terms of the talent that comes into the auditorium to bring more people in. And I thought the comment was made, go big or go home. The, I'm not sure who made the comment at the time, but the suggestion was, if we were able to go out and provide a promoter a little bit of a stipend to be able to help bring in a better, a higher quality talent, could we do that? In 2023, in our budget, in our auditorium budget, we had budgeted $25,000 for auditorium events, which basically means that we could have gone ahead and booked in a $25,000 act, per the budget. To date, we had not spent any money in that particular category. When we had discussed that, it became obvious that we were going to be up against a couple of deadlines. Number one, we were trying to put the Folk Festival together. But at the end of the day, we did a really good job with that, but we had the opportunity to procure the Ozark Mountain Daredevils as what would be the headliner for the show. And that, we didn't know the exact amount of money that they would take to bring them in, but I had the discussion with Larry Schaefer, Little Wayne. I asked him and said, what would be opportunistic if we could do that? He said, if you could use $10,000 of that budget, he said, that would help me go ahead and get not only them, but the other talent as well, because we have two bands coming in. And I said, well, let me take it to the commission.
Who's this person?
Larry Schaefer.
Oh, Schaefer.
Little Wayne, right. So we had put together a plan. We did not have a figure until, I think, probably mid-May of what it was going to cost. But I had had that out there, and I had the opportunity to discuss within chair that, and he said, take it to the commission. And I reflected that in my notes to y'all. That is hanging in the balance. What we would do, if so approved, is to go ahead and pay $10,000 directly, which would be the deposit to the Ozark Mountain Daredevils management, not to anybody, but it would be to the band. Larry Schaefer then would go ahead and take care of the rest of the monies to the band, the payment as performed, and also the payment and deposits to Creek Rocks, which is the second band. We've had some further discussion about that. There's a little bit of urgency to it. We don't want the Daredevils to go away. We were really opportunistic about it, and we had challenged Larry to go ahead and help us put it online. Since that time, we've sold approximately 360 tickets to the show. So the show's already sold, and it is selling. We've got two more months to promote it. So what I'd like to offer is the ability for the commission to go ahead and forward the $10,000 to Ozark Mountain Daredevils as deposit, and then move forward with the promotion as scheduled.
What do y'all think?
Why is everyone looking at me?
There's so few people up here.
So if we promote it, then what's the max seats?
There's 986 seats at our theater.
So if we sell out, do you know what the breakdown would be for the investment of 10,000 versus the ROI for it?
I can't determine that, because it depends on the prices of all the tickets. There's a varying scale for those tickets right now. I think the high ticket is 45, balconies are 25. So I don't know what that magic number's going to be. There's some other factors that go into it, obviously. One is the advertising and promotion that goes into it. Number two, any backline equipment that might have to be rented. It is a CAPC production as such, because we are the ones that are doing the Folk Festival. So the ROI on it, depending upon concession sales and things like that, could be a return in the investment of maybe four or $5,000. Now, we've had discussion about how do we rent the auditorium, and I'm going to just say this. Put a lot of time and effort into this thinking. It occurred to me that we are doing it all wrong. And the reason I say that is, is that if we take a look at another thing that we do, which is called market support funds, we give away maximum amounts of $5,000 to people we hope bring in 1,000 people. We have no way to know whether 1,000 people show up or not. However, what we do try to do is, in the calculation of how people say they're going to bring an audience, we calculate the lodging nights, and we calculate the food and drink. We add those together, do a little multiplication, some division, and we come up with what that 3% factor is. If we sold out the auditorium at 986 seats, at $25 per ticket, the city, or in this case, the CAPC, would net about $3,800 in tax revenue. Now, that means that there was a lot of money spent on food and drink before the show and after the show. We've never taken that into consideration. And I think that's the reason, I'm going to go back to a point, and we'll discuss it later, is how we charge for the auditorium is what charge by the seat.
Right.
So a seat might cost $5 to the promoter, or it might cost three. For a nonprofit, it would be a $1,000 deposit. You might get the money back, depending on how many seats are sold. So there's a better way to do it than we've been doing it, and we've been doing it in backwards fashion. We've never thought about what we do normally as an organization in giving money away.
That sounds like a great workshop topic. Because I, and I've realized in the past, we need to talk, have that conversation again. We set that rental at $3,500, and I know the two different sides argument about it, but is that working or not? We definitely should go back and revisit that, talk about it, and mix it all that you just said, so. Now focusing on this one, is the $10,000 to Larry Schaefer is really a down payment to the band.
Yes.
Saying this is, and how much would we pay the band?
Nothing. We're done.
Okay, after the $10,000?
That's right.
So we're paying the band upfront? Is that what we're doing?
We will go ahead and provide the band deposit of $10,000.
Which is, basically, we're paying them upfront of all the, all the money we're going to pay them.
We don't write a check to Little Wayne, or Larry Schaefer, or anybody. It's to the Ozark Mountain, whatever their management team is, yes.
Oh. What do you think, David?
Sorry, I had a meeting on. Yeah, I do think we, I didn't find it odd, I think this is the first band that I've ever dealt with that wanted all their money upfront. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, this is a 50% deposit. The band is $20,000.
Oh, it's half their money upfront. But it's a well-known band, you know?
Yeah.
So. I don't deal with contracts and bands.
We've already booked them, so, I mean, we should pay them if they're, you know, kind of here.
Did you hear him? He says it's already booked, we should go ahead and pay it.
Yeah.
And our contract would reflect all this, right?
Yeah, you need to sign the contract, yeah. I'm not.
Our, the contract we signed will reflect the $10,000 upfront, $10,000 later.
Yeah, and Larry Schaefer makes the final payment.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make it clear, we don't have anybody step foot on that stage unless we have a contract. Any other questions, David?
No, that's it for me.
So anybody else have anything else to say about that? Any, anything else? Motion?
This goes out of the event talent. Event talent. Which line item in the budget?
It's coming out of the auditorium event. I can't remember exactly how it's said. It's auditorium talent events. Actually, it's our talent for the auditorium. And it's a $25,000 line item right now that exists. I can't remember the number of the line item.
Okay.
I move that we use $10,000 out of the auditorium event line item to pay for the down payment for the Ozark Mountain Daredevils.
Do I have a second?
Just a second.
David made the second. Bradley's thinking.
I don't remember what it was. Yeah. I'm sure we had.
Is it the auditorium expenses? It is down here.
He's looking at the budget.
Under auditorium, it is. We've got a line item here for auditorium. Auditorium talent deposit, which actually is right here. So this is where we go ahead and pay our talent deposits and so forth. So it's actually coming out of this line item here, number 6079, which we have, you know, looks like we lost money. But we've got $20,000.
This is last year, actually.
Oh, is that right?
I'm sorry.
I'm wondering.
I don't have this year's.
Well, we, that's the, that's the line item.
So 6079?
6079.
6079?
Yeah, 6079.
Anything else?
I see it. I second it.
David already seconded. Colin Polk made the motion, David Evansino seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. So we have four positive motion carries. Any commissioner comments? This is our last tiny work, special workshop for today, anyway.
I guess I'm usually first. That's right.
There you go.
I just want to say thank you, Mike, for the hard work you've done, and for your perseverance through everything. And then also thank you, Danielle, Channel Lee, Caitlin, for your perseverance through everything that has occurred. And I appreciate my colleagues and their hard work to push through, to get us back to work, so that we can definitely focus on advertising the city, especially at a critical point, moment right now for our city. So I just want to say thank you to all of you as well.
Okay. Colin?
I'd like to say thank you to the community just for riding that out with us. I'm definitely excited to be past the giant hurdle and get back to work with Mike and the rest of the team. So thanks to, thanks to the CAPC team, and thanks to the community.
Okay. David, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to echo that I'm very pleased to have Mike back, and also for the rest of you guys, very grateful to have you, and I know we can push through it again.
Great, thank you. Chair, or acting chair comments, I should say. Appreciate everybody being here, volunteering, sticking through this process. I think we're back on track, hopefully. We've got some rough road to ride, but we'll get through it all. Thank you for Shira. Is that how you say your first name?
Shira.
I know I was pronouncing it wrong the other night, I'm sorry about that. Shira Faust, right? Shira Faust has applied to be on the commission, and she's not been approved by city council yet, but she's been nominated, and she's attending today, and I appreciate that as always. And hang in there, we'll get through this. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Second.
Colin Polk made the motion, and Bradley Tate Green seconded. All in favor adjourning, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
It still wasn't bad in 45 minutes.